We'll move to the approval of the agenda. If there are any additions or deletions, please let me know. Otherwise, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I move to approve this, Red.
Moved by O'Clarity?
Second.
Second by Wright. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed. We'll ask for approval of the minutes from the August 1st meeting of 2022. If there are any questions, additions or deletions, please say so now. Otherwise, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Wright?
I second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion of the show. If anybody has anything that they would like to address that is not on tonight's agenda, please step forward now. If not, we will move on to new business. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing. This is the Decal 2022 Comprehensive Plan Update. Mr. Olson will give us an update on that. And I want to take a moment to thank he and, sorry, it was my mind.
Bill.
Bill, for all, for all the work that they've done on it. There's been countless hours by both of them invested in this, and we are grateful.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm happily to present the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Update. It's been a lot of work going into this. Pretty much started beginning of the year crafting the draft of the plan along with Bill Nicholas, City Manager. And we reviewed those drafts with the Commission on four occasions. On April 4th, May 2nd, May 16th, and then June 6th. We had a lot of good input, ran through the plan, did some changes. And then we had two open houses to gather further public input. Those were on July 14th and also June 30th. We put a legal notice in the newspaper as required that was published in the Chronicle on July 27th. We also had the draft of the plan on our website for a few months now. It's been publicizing our social media outlets several times, the plan, and we had good turnout at the open houses, too. So the plan consists of five chapters. The introduction, inventory analysis, where we did analysis of the city, the land uses, demographics, income, subdivisions, other analysis to kind of lead into your goals and objectives, which is the third chapter. Fourth was the land use categories and the actual plan itself, future land use plan. And we also had urban design guidelines, which gave guidance on how structures and subdivisions should be built and looked, giving different kind of feedback on guidelines for commercial, residential, industrial buildings. The primary features of the, and the plan is good for five, 10 years. Just summarizing some of the primary features of the plan. Addition of industrial sites on Gerler Road, east of Peace Road. Industrial development further along Peace Road, north of Route 38. Limited low-density residential sites in the northwest and southwest corners of the city, out in the mile and a half jurisdiction. Within those areas, we added large areas of agricultural areas. In the 2005 plan, those areas were all single-family. The projections back then for single-family population growth were, you know, at sixty, seventy thousand. Obviously, that didn't happen. So we ran in the amount of single-family to be annexed into the city. And we, through our analysis, we also found, and I went through the slides before, a large inventory of lots already in the city, planted either plumery or final that are ready to be built on. So also mixed-use designations reflect current market interests such as the, what we've done downtown with Cornerstone Plaza McHale, with commercial on the bottom and residential above, also with Agora Tower and Isaac Suites. And also feature ones out in Annie Lake North area at Hillcrest and Blackhawk Road, and also possibly along Lucinda. Also, we identified large institutional areas, NIU, city facilities, sanitary district. Make sure those are down. Also spent a lot of time updating the map to make sure the existing land uses were correct. We went almost parcel by parcel, block by block, updating the plan, making sure everything was reflected changes since all the zoning approvals and plan approvals since '05. Mentioned the AGN area and the redevelopment of that corridor. The AGN plan is incorporated into this document. Maybe you see my cursor, but this is a future land use map. The city boundary is in black here, so this area in a mile and a half, which we do have some planning jurisdiction in terms of zoning and planning, although it's unincorporated in DeKalb County, we reserved the vast majority of it for ag land and just a few areas of single-family areas right next to the current city limits. And we have infill areas, single-family, that possibly could be annexed, developed. We have a large Iron Gate development with a mix of land uses there that's approved zoning and plumery plan basis. And so we did go quite far out. That's the big change in the plan. The '05 plan had this all single-family and corresponding commercial and parks, et cetera. So that was brought in a lot, and we're reserving a lot in agriculture, particularly to the west and northwest of the city. I mentioned in the primary features, too, the changes industrially along I-88 corridor. This is a Peace Road intersection show. The addition of industrial areas south of Gerler, such as Meta, and further south on to Kesselinger. And then further east, too, to our boundary agreement we have with Cortland, and also at the Peace Road corridor, industrial areas out to our boundary with Sycamore. So in industrial classification, it covers everything, industrial, heavy, to lighter, to data centers, to warehouse distribution. So it covers quite a bit. So we did get a lot of public comments at the, just in writing, through emails, at the open houses. Some of the comments requested specific action be done zoning-wise. This is not a zoning ordinance, a comp plan, so it's a future land use guide. There's some directions in there that will go back and will amend the zoning ordinance or UVO based on these, but these are not, the plan is not giving direction on specific parcels for very detailed development. It's more of a general land use plan. There were some comments regarding adding, as I mentioned before, plans already approved, like the AGN plan or Sustainability Plan. We added some language in there that those past plans, if approved by the council, they're not negated, they don't go away, they're still valid. But we're not taking, you know, chunks of those plans and incorporating into the language here. That's not what the comp plan really is for. Those plans are identified and are still valid, of course. Other comments were, one thing we did add, there was a lot of comments on affordable housing, so we had a language to strengthen that, language up. I encourage affordable housing, allowing smaller lot sizes, smaller homes, and also consideration of accessory dwelling units or granny flats in residential areas where you have an extra dwelling unit perhaps over a garage or something. So that was something we did add language in since the initial discussion. So that's about it. I weren't happy to answer any questions, really provide, thank the Commission for all your input and work on this and the public. Also, thank City Manager Bill Nicholas, Doug Eaton, our planning tech, who did, we did this all in-house, this comp plan. So we didn't have a consultant, we didn't spend any extra dollars. This is all in-house. So I thank Doug with the mapping. Scott Zach with the photos and images, he's our management analyst. Stephanie, of course, with communication with the Commission and public. Brian Copy setting up the rooms for the open houses and commission meetings. So I'm recommending approval. There's a sample motion. This will require City Council action, of course, and it's amendment to Chapter 30, which is our official comprehensive plan chapter in the municipal code, where we adopt this plan, it becomes part of that chapter. So that's part of the motion. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have from the public.
We do have a speaker request form from Paul Brock. Would you like to step forward?
Certainly, thank you. Good evening. My name is Paul Warwick. I'm Executive Director of the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation. As Executive Director of DCEDC, I am pleased to support the 2022 City of DeKalb Comprehensive Plan Update. The plan's land use map and its goals and objectives provide an excellent blueprint to guide future development in the City of DeKalb. The land use map's designation of additional industrial areas, industrial sites on the city's southeast side is most welcome and timely. Investors, industrial businesses, and international corporations are attracted to shovel-ready sites near the Peace Road interchange. Access to Chicagoland and Mid-America markets, abundant and reliable infrastructure, competitively priced land, a qualified and expandable labor force, and unparalleled education and training resources are driving increased industrial development interest. City staff prudently identified and designated significant industrial development opportunities along the Gerler Road corridor, south of I-88, and east of Peace Road, south of 38. Also, industrial sites, additional industrial sites continue northward along the Peace Road to Worsing Parkway. Again, these sites are very much in demand. DeKalb's most recent development success, four mega developments in three years, has contributed to DCEDC development increases more than doubling from 35 per year to over 80 last year. These increased industrial land use designations on the land use map serve to guide DCEDC in promoting development opportunities to site selectors, real estate developers and brokers, business executives, and investors. The Comprehensive Plan's industrial goals and objectives decide or detail how desired developments will be achieved, including actively collaborating with DCEDC, the State of Illinois, and other organizations and associations to promote industrial sites. Also aggressively promoting shovel-ready sites, particularly the Gerler Road corridor and the Peace Road corridor. Upgrading the Peace Road roadway from I-88 to Route 38 to facilitate additional industrial development east of Peace Road, north of I-88, and encouraging research and development, data centers, and other light industrial development. The Comprehensive Plan's economic development goals specify several objectives to stimulate the local economy by ensuring DeKalb is a desirable place to live, work, and do business. These include maintaining a positive image, maintaining approachable and responsible municipal services, maintaining and repairing public infrastructure, and actively promoting business retention through the city's Economic Development Commission, DCEDC, and the DeKalb Chamber of Commerce. And also aggressively marketing commercial and industrial sites to expand and diversify the tax base, including the Chicago West Business Center, Park 88, and the next generation of industrial sites along Peace Road and Gerler Road. As Executive Director of the DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation, I encourage the DeKalb Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend to the City Council approval of the Chapter 30 amendment to the municipal code to adopt the City of DeKalb 2022 Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else? If not, that's what happens when I'm backwards.
Hello.
If you could just state your name and address, of course.
Keith Nyquist, 18 Greenport, DeKalb.
Thank you, sir.
So this is the third time I have appeared in front of the Commission. And as I said before, I understand a lot of work goes into this, and I appreciate that and value that. So I just, I guess I want to begin with a question. Are, is the Commission, in the course of this public hearing, taking final action on a recommendation tonight? Or is the public hearing one step before the vote of the Commissioners?
It's up to the Commission, but usually they'll make a recommendation the same time as the hearing. After the hearing is completed, they have the option to make a recommendation. So that's the recommendation from staff, but it's up to the Commission.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate the clarification. And well, I want to begin my comments by saying that I understand that the purpose behind this plan is not that it's a zoning map. I understand that entirely. But that when issues of zoning and decisions are made in a community about how land should be used or how decisions are made, typically the process is that a group such as the City Council will look back at the documents that a subgroup like Planning and Zoning will approve and use that as a justification for voting and approving for the plan. So I understand that this is a step to perhaps other zoning decisions that will be made ahead of, ahead of time. So I think you know why I'm here. Our neighborhood has concerns about the parcel that is designated for mixed-use, high-density residential and commercial. This is at the NIU annex site. And our concern is that a four or five-story building that borders up against our, our street, in essence, our backyards, would not only be a blow to our quality of life, but also actually to the value of our property. So if I can be so blunt. So if it is the will of the Commission to approve this tonight, I would respectfully ask that the Commission at least discuss this matter among, in public forum. And you do have the power within your Commission to amend the map as needed. I understand a lot of work has gone into it, but this would be a small, this would be a small amendment that would not reflect the overall tenor of the, of the plan in front of you. There's a lot of really good stuff, I think, in the plan, especially the stuff about open space, open space preservation and things like that. So that is my humble request, is that if you do move to approve tonight, that at least there be a motion to discuss an amendment, and that if you decide to approve at another date, that the same occur. So I thank you for your time and allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to, Mr. Nyquist spoke at a previous meeting. Just so to give the Commission the reference to what site he's referring to. Very hard to see here, but this is Sycamore Road. It's behind the Elwood State House. It's the old NIU arts building, which is.
The old Skorber Warehouse.
Has been sold, so we're calling for mixed-use residential above, commercial at the bottom, or it could be all commercial or residential. And we mentioned before, if there's any, it's going to require rezoning, so that requires notification to surrounding property owners of 250 feet. But that's our recommendation for the land use there. It's not specifically on, it shall only be three stories high or X number of apartments. So it's a mix of land use, and we'd be looking like every other project to make sure when it comes in that it's compatible with this surrounding neighborhood, it doesn't impact it in a negative way. So, but that's a parcel. It's called for, it's hard to see here, but it's mixed-use at this stage. So this is a reference, so we'll talk about.
If there, yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Dave McClary, and I am actually a neighbor of Keith. I am at 12 Greenport, and he is at 18. Keith and I have discussed this particular parcel of property several times because it falls directly, it's directly adjacent to our homes. And I want to just very quickly give you a little bit of background. I've lived in the home that I'm in now for 37 years, so I've been here for a long time. The neighborhood that we're in has been directly affected, in some ways good, in some ways not so good, by the development that has taken place along Sycamore Road. One of the things that we notice is that the sort of quiet aspect of that neighborhood no longer exists, and that's for a number of reasons. One of those reasons is, again, the development and the traffic that has been caused as a result. Development is not a bad thing by any stretch of the imagination, but again, from the perspective of our neighbors, what we experience is, for example, people are avoiding driving along Sycamore Road. They, they come in at an area of Greenwood and come in and go around, and they enjoy the view or whatever it is, but primarily what they do is speed, and we see a lot of traffic added as a result. So not, not a particularly great thing for us. One of my primary concerns, again, is if, in fact, the development that takes place where the art building exists now, we're going to see a lot of issues with additional traffic, with lighting. You know, it used to be that that was a very, again, secluded, kind of dark, very nice residential area. We now have a significant amount of light pollution and, again, additional traffic. We just had the development that went up on Oakland, which is, again, a mixed-use with residential and commercial. The amount of traffic that has generated down Oakland is considerable. You know, they come, they come down Oakland and they turn left or right on Greenbakers, and we're seeing all of that traffic. Now, why they choose to do that, I don't know. Because to me, it would take a longer period of time to get from here to there, but that's, that's the choice that they make. So I think, you know, unfortunately, there are a lot of opportunities for the public to contribute their ideas and their thoughts to, to reflect to these, these issues, but the public does not take them. I mean, if you look at the attendance, and I, you look at the attendance at the open house, and I know that, you know, the comments have been made that the attendance was good. Three or four or five people attend people is not good attendance. I make my living in this, in this kind of environment, and it is tough to get people to come out to these meetings. You know, they want the best of services, they want their property values to increase, they, they don't want their lives impacted by things, but they're not necessarily willing to come out to meetings to express their opinions. My request to you would be to really look at ways to involve people on a much larger scale. It takes a lot of effort, but when you only have 10 or 12 or five or six or whatever people attending these meetings, it does virtually nothing to provide you with the input that you need to make your decisions. So.
Well, with all due respect, what would you suggest we do to increase attendance?
Well, I think that's, I think that's a long-term.
Publicly announced.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a known entity, and the Comprehensive Plan has been published in the paper.
Well, I would say this. I would say that there aren't a whole lot of people who read the newspaper. I read it, I get it, I actually get the printed copy. It, it takes, it takes a lot of effort, and it's a decision on your part and other, other entities in city government, whether they put forth really what takes a great deal of effort. It, it's, it's an over, overtime issue. How do you get people involved? How do you get them, how do you get the community? And the downside of not doing that is that there are, it's a, it's a very limited number of people who actually take the time and talk about their ideas, and it allows the city and those in position of authority to sort of guide things in a way that they may feel is best for the city, but they're doing it without the input of a lot of residents. So I would just say, I know it's really tough. Again, I do this for a living. I know how tough it is. But in, in the instances where I'm involved, I'm involved, it's, it's something that I insist on. I insist that my clients get the people involved that are going to be impacted.
Sadly, we don't have that luxury.
Well.
And I, I'm all ears, if you have any idea.
Well, I'll tell you, I would be, I would be having.
I mean, we're here as a group of volunteers, so that was the first step.
Right, and I know, I know. It's volunteers, and it's, it's, takes a tremendous amount of time and effort, none of which any of us have. So it, it's, it's something that happens over time and with specific steps that are taken, and I would be happy to give you some input on that.
So, Olson.
I will do that, but in the meantime, I, I would just sort of iterate what Keith has said. These things are having a significant impact on our residential area.
Well, and just to clarify, too.
Yeah.
The Capri, as we were discussing, the Comprehensive Plan is a suggested roadmap for where we'd like to go.
Right.
So there's nothing set in stone here.
Yeah, good.
We continue to reexamine it over time.
Yeah. Well, that's why I'm mentioning this now, because of, you know, this can at least give you a little bit of input in terms of how it is, you know, how it affects me and my family personally, and how it affects my neighbors.
But to your point, sadly, what I find is that not until it affects someone in the adjacent parcel of property does someone come.
Yep.
So if everyone had a voice and was concerned about the city as a whole, we'd have more people.
I, I.
And I know that everybody, you know, and I know a lot of people do, and we've had, you know, and I would call the attendance at the two meetings that we had good, and, you know, everything from environmental issues to, you know, things that were probably too task-specific to put into the plan.
Right, right.
But that having been said, when this does come up, as Dan had said, if someone proposes development, we'll have to go through the process, and I assume that you'll be here and we'll be here, and we'll be more than happy to discuss it with you.
Well, that's good, and that's, that's the only thing that I ask, and again, I'm more than happy to contribute some suggestions to you. It's a chicken and egg thing. It really is.
Yeah, we don't have chickens and eggs. I'm sorry, that wasn't me.
That's true. Well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
And it was quite sincere, wouldn't it, if you had some questions?
No, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
And the plan does have comments, directions on compatibility between commercial and non-commercial uses and setbacks. And yeah, the key is, Max mentioned, once, if, when there's a project proposed there and a rezoning, that's when we're going to get into the really compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods, so.
I mean, not unless proposed, do we address specific issues?
Yeah, we don't know what actually is proposed, yeah. So it's kind of hard to respond to that.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, with that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to comments from the Commission.
Just to reiterate on the parcel that those two gentlemen were talking about, the only change that had happened is because it went from institutional ownership to private ownership, right?
It was private ownership prior to that, prior to that, because of the Skorber's warehouse.
Yeah, it was private, but then NIU owned it, and then the recent change is from institutional to that. There's been no change on that. Now, as far as the, and I, and I understand your concerns are very valid as far as being concerned about parcel being redeveloped, but it's, in context of this meeting and this particular hearing, is, this is, this is just an outline. So the, the issue would be, is there's lots of individual parcels that, that there could be, you know, concern on, and how, how it's going to go forward, and short-term and long-term. And so I think, I think for the matter of this meeting, we hear you guys, and those are completely valid reasons and important things for us to discuss. But since this is just kind of a broad strokes, like, this is a wish list, we just can't go parcel by parcel on everything until we have something on deck that, that we have evidentiary support of it changing in a way that would, would not go with what the, the rest of the neighborhood would want. So we want to make sure that when and if that comes up, that you two and other neighbors who have those concerns would come up. But I, I think as far as, as the Comprehensive Plan goes, I think that's the best that we can do, is hear you guys and say, yep, nothing's set in stone, these are just, these are broad strokes, these are outlines, this is a, looking at it as, as a, as a goal for the future.
This is the top of the phone.
Yeah, yes, yes. So, yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify that I understood that I went private-public, private- So, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that I understood that it went private-public-private again.
Yeah, in the 2005 plan, it's actually commercial, shown as commercial, but it was single family zoning and NIU owned it, so it's stayed that way for-
Many years.
-until they sold it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you know, that one parcel is a concern as are others, but I think overall, I think a lot of things were addressed. There's a lot of work to do, but as far as getting, giving all the boards and the different arms of city government a kind of a map to work on, I think this is a, has a lot of really good parts, so.
Yeah, from a development standpoint, it's a wonderful tool to encourage people for investment in every capacity.
Yeah, just to kind of point us in a direction, but things can change, which is a bad fed, a luxury, all of those things.
Clearly from the amount of residential we had in the last plan to where we're at now, so.
Yeah, I think that was the one thing I wanted to address. Mr. Kennedy?
Well, I do hear your concerns and I think it's important that even along the way as we, you know, make recommendations and we know it goes to the city council, that those concerns be reiterated to the city council. And, you know, as that parcel comes into focus for somebody, I think it'll, you know, be taken into account what you've said all along, so I think it's important to continue that, you know, because again, these are recommendations, we're not going to look at each parcel, but we do hear the people that come in with concerns for those pieces of land that are next to theirs or that they have concerns about, so I think it's important to continue that.
And we're not without empathy, because if you remember correctly, I was on the front page of the paper for coming forward and changing my mind a couple of years ago about a hotel development, so I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for being here and keeping it top of mind for us too, and it's very much appreciated.
Yep. Any other comments, questions? I will say, if you can help us change our Nielsen ratings, I'd be grateful. Okay, with that, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I move that Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the city council approval of an amendment to chapter thirty official comprehensive plan of municipal code to adopt the City of DeKalb twenty twenty-two comprehensive plan dated August ninth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved by Wright. May I have a second?
I have a second.
Seconded by O'Flaherty. Roll call, please.
Becker, O'Flaherty.
Yes.
Penny Graham.
Yes.
Stoker, Wright.
Yes.
McMahon, Maxwell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Our second item of business tonight is a public hearing, a petition by the City of DeKalb for text amendments to chapter twenty-three, United Development Ordinance of the Municipal Code, to amend article five point one-two, high heavy industrial district, to add solar energy generation facility solar farm as special use, and to amend article seven-one-six, solar energy systems, excuse me, to establish regulations for solar energy generation facilities and slash solar farms. Steph Furt, please.
Yes, this is a city application for text amendment to the UDO, as Max mentioned, to add solar farms to the UDO. We don't have that specifically mentioned in the ordinance. We did approve one down at Gerler Road, South First Street, that was a planned development industrial district zoning, so we just accommodated it in the ordinance, in the agreement. And then we have a hearing after this, a proposal for a solar farm along Pleasant Street across from the airport. So in conjunction with that, we thought we'd do a text amendment to add the use in here, put a few standards in, because there may be others that come into the city. Most are in larger areas in the county, but a few perhaps can come into the city. So the first amendment is to the heavy industrial district, to add it as a special use, and the term is solar energy generation facility. That's the term we used in the Plan Development Ordinance on Gerler Road, and this added solar farm as after that, so we're going to add it in as one of the special uses. That means they have to go through a hearing, findings of fact, any special use, have to meet the criteria before approval. And as I mentioned, the one down at Gerler in East, or South First Street, we had that in the ordinance, so we used some of the language in that and also the, from the lease that was signed with the applicant on the next hearing to kind of form these guidelines. We have in the UDO already the solar energy systems ordinance, and that deals mostly, or deals strictly with solar panels and businesses and homes, generating electricity for that particular site. The definition for this new one, solar farm, is pretty much generation of power for off-site use, and it's the primary use on the property. So we have regulations already in place, it's been there for several years regarding onsite home residential, commercial use. This is strictly for solar farms where it's a primary use on the site and it pretty much sends all the power offsite, of course. Some of the standards, so we have a definition, some of the other standards, on the second page under three A is setbacks. We're recommending a setback of fifty feet from any property line or street right of way, and next to any residential zone property, make it a hundred feet. So fifty feet, in the HI district, the building setbacks forty feet, I think we had fifty feet in the ordinance down at Gerler Road, so that seemed reasonable, and then this double it for if it's next to residential zoning. That's the same setback if a building in the HI district was next to residential, that setback's a hundred feet, so we made it the same. We also looked at other communities, DeKalb County's got a pretty thorough ordinance, City of Rochelle, a few others, just to get some ideas on language or to compare. Maximum height of any component of the solar farm except overhead transmission lines, height of fifteen feet, that's currently what we have in the ordinance for onsite use. Fencing, that's important around those, fencing, it's not required, but if you do, you can have it up to eight feet and that can be around the whole perimeter of the site, so maximum eight feet. Any lighting has to be for security and safety purposes, has to be shielded so it doesn't glare on adjoining properties, a lot of these don't have much lights at all whatsoever. They have to be, in terms of the maintenance of the solar farm, the native grasses and vegetation of their solar panels have to be used, you have to have soil stabilization measures approved by our city engineer, weed control has to be done, so that's in the language. And finally, a decommissioning plan, meaning when they do end it, how's that work? So we use a language right from the one on Gerler Road and one in the lease that the city signed over the winter with the one on Pleasant Street, which the hearing is after this one, we copied the exact language. So it indicates if the use is discontinued for a hundred eighty consecutive days, and they, at that point, then they get six months to take everything out. Six months to comply with that, all the structures, foundations have to be taken out and restored to soil and vegetation, to usable farmland. Cost, engineers estimate a probable cost just to cover, in case they don't do that, and some type of security, a bond letter, credit to ensure that if they just leave, the city can use some funds, take their funds, they put an escrow to take the equipment out of there. As I mentioned, we used regulations in our current ordinance and lease that we already have, and a few other communities too. So these are pretty basic, but they do cover the basic things that you're going to find in most ordinances, so. And as I mentioned, as a special use comes in, we can adopt conditions, additional ones if you see fit, based on the location, so we have flexibility for that. So I'd recommend approval of these text amendments to the UDO and attach in exhibit A the specific ones, and sample motions prepared.
Any questions?
It's up and coming.
Yeah, it is, well, and I do appreciate the fact that it can be restored as farmland if for any reason it fails or needs to be replaced or-
Mostly it's, it's pretty easy to do that, it isn't disruptive.
It's not a lot of energy sources we can do that with.
Yeah.
Are the two that you mentioned the only two in DeKalb in there?
In the city, in the city of DeKalb. The county has quite a few approved, I'm not sure how many will-
Everybody suburban is in this county?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's for private, that's for use on the apartments itself, that is a little unusual, but that's in the county.
Okay.
Comments to the public?
Oh, sorry. Anyone from the public that would like to speak to this issue? I have to close the public hearing, close discussion. I'll ask for a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve.
Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to city council approval of the text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance regarding solar energy generation facilities, solar farms, as indicated in exhibit A of this staff report.
So motion by O'Flaherty, may I ask for a second? Seconded by Wright. Roll call, please.
Becker, O'Flaherty.
Yes.
Penny Graham.
Yes.
Stoker, Wright.
Yes.
McMahon, Maxwell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very much. And third item on our agenda tonight is a public hearing, a petition by Sunvest Solar LLC, DBA, DeKalb Taylor Solar LLC for a special use permit for a solar energy generation facility solar farm located on approximately forty-nine acre site along the north side of Pleasant Street across from the DeKalb Municipal Airport. And we have a presentation.
Hi, good evening, thank you for letting me be here. My name is Bill French, I'm with Sunvest Solar, and we're here proposing a five megawatt, eight C solar facility, conditional use approval on property here in DeKalb. Here's my contact information, I'm the Regional Director of Project Development, email address and phone number in case anyone has questions after the hearing who would like to speak with us, take those calls until we can. Sunvest Solar has been in business since two thousand nine, we're a Midwest-based company, we actually headquartered in Pewalki, Wisconsin, we also have offices in Madison, Wisconsin, and then in Geneva, which is where I'm located. We started off as a small company with just a few employees, this during the downturn, you know, seven oh eight, we were actually owned by a development company called Newman Development, and the owner was looking for different things to do, trying to move forward, so started doing some smaller scaled rooftop installations, ended up doing on churches, schools, small residences and such, but really started growing the company from there. And since that time, we have grown to be one of the top ten solar developers in the nation. We have an excellent credit rating, we're an A-plus rating by the Better Business Bureau, and we have proven track record of success. We have over eight hundred and fifty projects that we've installed, it's now in twelve states. This next line is actually getting old, we now have over fifty employees working for us as we operate in the twelve to thirteen states that we are located. So, you know, solar, we believe, really has minimal to low impacts, it's a low impact use as we see it. For instance, the solar panel produces very little glare, if any at all, so think about it, panels are designed to absorb and collect sunlight, not reflect it, so it actually has a non-reflective surface on the panel that helps reduce any kind of glare and then helps concentrate and collect the sunlight. Solar facilities are quiet during the day and they're silent at night, so once the sun goes down, they're absolutely quiet. There are very few moving parts, I'll talk about that a little bit later in my presentation. They're fairly low to the ground, so they're only seven to eight feet tall at full height. They're clean, they're safe, they do not emit any emissions, they require very little maintenance once they're installed. Typically, routine maintenance happens twice a year, unless there's an emergency and you need to come on and do some other work. We are not proposing any building sun sites, no lighting, and then once construction is complete, very little traffic is generated to the site. Generally, it's going to be somebody in pickup truck, maybe once a month or once every other month, outside of the two routine maintenance periods that we would typically see on a Project benefits to the city, first of all, once the solar facility is open and operational, there's very little impact to the city, in other words, we aren't requiring really any real services, so there's no sewer or water required, it will be secured, so the police would not need to be there unless something happened, and then as far as fire, there's really nothing to burn, so. As we talked about in the earlier presentation, once the project is completed, so once the lease expires or the term ends, we will revert the property back to its original condition and original use. So there's no concrete used, other than for some concrete paths, so any of the support systems, there's no concrete needed for that work, all the piles, and we'll go over that in a little bit, all the piles are driven without beams of concrete. In this case, we are adhering to the new proposed ordinance, obviously we've had some experience with the city, so we came through and permitted the project on Gerler and South First Street, and we're here to very similar setbacks there, so we're using a hundred, it's going to be fifty feet from the road right of way, and a hundred feet from the residences. We will, just as a matter of practice, locate all field tiles, we do that to preserve existing drainage out there, and if anything's encountered, either we'll reroute or correct. Project switch here, transformers and things like that, we'll talk about it a little later. In this case, we're using a central inverter, so that means we can locate everything to the middle of the site, therefore minimize any potential impacts to surrounding properties. This site's a little unique in that we are adjacent to the airport, we have done our initial FAA studies, they have come back and they have given us a determination of hazard, which is the first step for us, so we will just locate for the solar facility. After construction, the ground will be seeded, we like to use a low maintenance prairie seed mix, it's deep rooted, it actually helps retain moisture, so it reduces runoff, and then we will use a pollinator friendly, heavy vegetation around the perimeter of the project, and that helps to actually encourage, you know, bees, birds, insects, things like that. So it's a, it's a nice way for us to reuse maintenance, two, it's much more attractive and three, it's environmentally beneficial. A five megawatt solar facility does produce enough power to typically take care of about seven hundred and fifty homes, so this would actually by itself create quite a bit of electricity for people to use. Panels, people always ask, how long do these last, they're warranted by the manufacturer for around twenty to twenty-five years, but even at that point, they still have about eighty percent of their producing capacity left, so they don't degrade down to zero, they, over twenty-five years, they're only going to lose about twenty percent of their capacity. Operation and maintenance, so this will all be maintained and followed, excuse me, operations will be done remotely, so it's all done by a wireless SCADA system, monitored twenty-four seven. What that means is if one of the panels or maintenance workers has an issue, we're alerted to it, someone will come out and take a look at it, either repair it on site or replace the component. Little bit about the project details, I'll give you a little bit of the background. So the site is located on the north side of Pleasant, just across the street from the airport. It's a parcel size itself is approximately fifty acres in size, but the project itself will be about forty acres inside the fence. Access will be off of Pleasant Street, it's that dark line running north, so we're going to stay to the east of the existing drainage, so there's actually a concrete drainage facility running through, that's that angled piece, so we'll stay to the right of that. It'll just be a gravel access drive at this point up into a parking area. Once you're inside the facility, there'll be parking for two cars, two vehicles typically, and then we are proposing an eight foot tall security fence. To give you a sample, it will not be chain link, but we refer to it as agricultural knot fence or woven steel fence. Probably the best example is if you've been on Beverly recently and seen the solar project that went-
Bethany.
Bethany, Beverly, what's on my-
Beverly, what's online?
Bethany, it's his name, Bethany and Airport, there's a solar facility that went in. That's a pretty good example of what the fence would look like. We just think it has a much more attractive look. It doesn't look quite like a prison when you put on a chain link. So there's no chain, or, excuse me, no barbed wire proposed. Explained, talked to you about how these are installed. So that machine on the right-hand side, that's just a pneumatic pounding machine, and so that just directly drives the post into the ground, so these posts will be what support the solar facility. It's just galvanized steel. They're driven anywhere from 8 to 15 feet in the ground. It's probably one of the most labor-intensive parts of the project. It's just laid out in a grid, they come out, carefully put it all together, and then most of the work actually to construct the facility and put it together is done by hand. So once the, once the, these piles are driven into the ground, like I said, most of the work is done pretty easily. We are proposing to use a tracking system, which means that they will track with the sun, east to western today, and just return to east at night. They're a little bit lower, smaller than, not as tall as a fixed tilt, so they're about 78 feet tall, they're full tilt, which is really in the morning and evening, but you know, in the middle of the day, it'll be flat against the ground. Beautiful picture of a, of the machine that does all the magic. On the left-hand side, that's the inverter, and that's just the box that will convert the electricity from direct current, which is how it's collected from the sun, and convert it into alternate current, which is how all of our power systems are used. I show you this because this system, like I mentioned before, is a central inverter, which means that there's just going to be one box in the middle of the project, as opposed to having strings of them all at the ends and rows that we won't see in some other projects. The advantage of this, again, is you can locate that away from residences or other things, set it on the middle of the site, and you'll never know it's there. Picture on the right, that's a pretty typical tracking system. This was actually reconstructed in Louis Lake. So this is on the west side of Route 47, just north of Route 64, and it shows you what they look like at full tilt. Provide this to you, just to show you kind of what the pollinator and the native seed mix will look like. This is typically what we use. In this case, it's pretty heavy with daisy, some coriocis, you might have some other native prairies in there, or, excuse me, forests and plants in there, but for the most part, it's going to stay low to the ground. And in this case, around the perimeter will be quite pretty with a lot of flowering vegetation. That concludes my presentation. Do you want to go to the last one? I'll show you this one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just gives you a little better indication of where the site is located, adjacent to the airport. We did receive comments from the Morgano family. I believe we've addressed as many of them as you can, or at least provided, but the answers I hope are sufficient, but I'm sure Dan will probably talk about that, but he wanted to indicate where they were located, adjacent to the property.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, Bill went through a very thorough review. Just a few things to note. Last December, the city council did approve a lease and easement agreement with the applicant for this subject site you see, to construct a solar farm. The lease was for 25 years. Mr. French went through all the development, how it's going to look and operate, the fence and the setbacks. The special use, we have findings of fact, so as a staff, we recommend approval of these. It meets the, all the requirements. It's not a, going to be impact the surrounding area, it's heavy industrial around there. And Mr. French testified that it's not going to be operated where it doesn't harm any property values in a negative way. There's really no utilities going there, except the electrical, there's no water, sewer. We'll provide a fence around there and access into the site, a couple of parking spaces. And it meets a comprehensive plan, the O5 plan and the draft one, the just recommended approval, both show transportation and the utilities for that particular site due to proximity to the airport. And as mentioned, too, they did receive FAA approval for the obstruction evaluation approval, which I guess is a, I don't know if that's a final approval needed, but it's a major one to get, showing that it doesn't, not going to disturb the aviation at the airport at all, so. As he mentioned, we did get an email from Pete and Beth Morgano. You can see they're, they live right next to the subject site, I put their location there on the aerial. They had several questions, and we, working with Bill, we answered those and provided in your packet there, just all details about the, about the plan, so that's provided to you. So we think this is, we'd recommend approval. It's a clean, emissions-free, renewable energy source. Staff fully supports the special use permit, and we prepared a sample motion that approves Exhibit A, that's the site plan that was shown earlier, for the site, and that shows the 100-foot setback next to the Morgano's lot, you know, the site plan. So that was, we changed that when we did get that email from Morgano's, that we thought 100 feet would be appropriate for the residential, so the plan was changed to meet that setback.
Any comments or questions from the public? Would anybody like to speak to this issue? If not, I'll pause the public hearing and ask the committee if we have any questions, discussions.
How many personnel does it take to operate that facility?
How many what?
Personnel, people.
Oh, to actually, to actually run it? Once it's up and operational?
Yeah.
It's usually being monitored by one person. Like I said, it's done remotely, so there would not be daily personnel on the property, if that's who you're referring to.
How often, you said that they don't break very often, or there might be issues. How often do they break?
You know, it's not, it's not a tremendous number. It's usually something that can be corrected, it's usually a bad connection, sometimes there's a panel failure with a module, people call it a module with a panel. Sometimes there's a failure there. In this case, because we're using a central inverter, it's going to be a little bit different. Sometimes the smaller inverters have issues over time, but it's really not, not all that often that things go wrong.
So you say he comes out, or somebody comes out twice a year to maintenance it routinely, maintenance and stuff like that? Those are the things he's checking for?
So, yeah, so they're monitoring it 24/7. The maintenance would be to, if the panels need washing, but in the mid-waist, we typically end up raiding the moisture, so we don't, it's not a big deal. The big thing would be that they would come and mow down the grass twice a year, and do any spot treating for weeds, anything like that. You know, we don't want to be, not just weeds, or you talk, or blow up the fence or under the panels, so there will be some treatment for that as well.
The only comment I had, as far as the seed mix is, it would be nice if there was some milkweed in there for the monarchs, but that's just me.
I agree.
Where's the generate, the energy going?
Oh, so, yeah, so this is what we would call, this is going to be a utility-facing project, which means that the electricity produced from this project will go directly onto the grid, and it's not at, so anywhere within Commonwealth, that is the service territory, is generated there. So once power gets onto the grids and the grid, you know, it could be any kind of mix, it could be wind, it could be solar, nuclear, coal, acids, all sorts of things. But the idea here is that we will produce at least with solar, and maybe take some of the reliance off of some of maybe the more carbon-heavy fuels that are up there.
Any notes? No? I will ask for a motion to approve.
Based on the submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the city council approval of a special use permit for a solar energy generation facility, solar farm, for the site plan sheet PV-100, prepared by Sunvest Solar LLC, labeled as Exhibit A, and shall be operated per the land lease and solar easement agreement approved by Orglets 2021-052.
So moved by Penne Graham. May I have a second? Seconded by Wright. May I have a roll call, please?
Becker. O'Flaherty.
Yes.
Penne Graham.
Yes.
Stoker. Wright.
Yes.
McMahon. Maxwell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Reports from city staff?
Next hearing is September 6th, that's a Tuesday, because the Labor Day on Monday. We'll have a couple hearings, those will be published next few days, so, and you'll get a link to those, so I'll just wait till those are, I'll announce it now, but we have a couple rezonings coming up for that meeting, again, Tuesday, back at the library, of course. So that's about it. Well, the council did approve the Project Wildcat annexation rezoning at their last meeting.
Wonderful. Great news. All right, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Moved by O'Flaherty. Seconded by? Wright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Nobody can say anything at this point. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.